All right, Madam Clerk, are you ready? This time we call the Garden Grove Housing Authority. Please call roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Beckles.
Present.
Commissioner Broadwater.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Winn. Commissioner O'Connor.
Here.
Vice Chair Fawn.
Here.
Chair Beard.
All right, I guess I'm up to bat since the President's not here. First of all, let's go ahead to any oral communications. Okay, we have none. How about consent items?
I'll move the issue.
Call for a second, please.
Do you want a second?
No, I don't think we have a second.
Second?
There we go.
We see five yes votes.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to public hearings for the 3A proposed budget.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like Danny Winn to make a presentation on the proposed housing authority budget.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The Section 8 Housing Assistance Program is federally funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development to assist very low-income families, seniors, disabled persons in payment of rent on privately-owned properties. The Garden Grove Housing Authority subsidizes over 2,300 families and administers an additional 300 families from incoming portability. Incoming portabilities are participants from other housing authorities in other jurisdictions who moved into Garden Grove. The administrative fee is paid to the Garden Grove Housing Authority for administering these families. All Section 8 rental units are inspected before admission and annually to ensure they are decent, safe, and sanitary. Each year, Housing Authority staff inspects approximately 4,000 rental units. We also administer the family sufficiency program. This program is for our current Section 8 participants and is designed to encourage tenant participation in education and career development. In addition, the Housing Authority has assets from the former Garden Grove agency. These assets include land purchased with housing set-aside funds, several homes in the Civic Center area which are being rented to low- and moderate-income families, and several affordable housing agreements. The rentals and the affordable housing agreements generate a small amount of revenue which is used for the maintenance and upkeep of those units and for the operational costs administering the assets. That concludes my report. Mr. O'Kieriki will provide additional information.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. In terms of numbers, the Housing Authority has a total allocation for the original housing program, which is a voucher program, family sufficiency and related administration of about $30.2 million. And they also now have responsibility for the low-mort housing since the redevelopment agency set aside, went away. And also, they have that responsibility for managing Civic Center properties. In total, for the fiscal year 2013-14, the Housing Authority is looking at a total resources of $30.6 million. Out of that, $29.875 million is allocated to the voucher program, which is the principal function of the Housing Authority. There's $103,000 allocated for the family self-sufficiency program. And for the low-mort program management, which is largely maintaining those properties, there's $114,000 allocated. And for the Civic Center properties, all of the rents that are collected out of it, the $90,000 is put back into the maintenance of those properties. And $267,000 goes to the city oversight, if you will, administration of the housing program. And we are looking at a projected balance of maybe $216,000 at the end of the fiscal year. And that concludes my report. We can answer any questions as you have.
Do we have any questions for staff?
How many cities have a housing authority in Orange County?
In Orange County, we have three cities, which is Garden Grove, Santa Ana, and Santa Ana, and the other 31.
Garden Grove, Santa Ana, and Santa Ana.
Anaheim.
I'm sorry, Anaheim.
Okay.
I'm sorry. And the other 31, 33 cities belongs to the county.
Okay. Now, does the county get the money from the other cities, or how does that work?
The county is basically a separate housing authority, so their jurisdiction is to administer 30 cities. That's their territory. So the four housing authorities are basically independent as far as operational.
Yeah, I think for the Housing Authority at the county level, they get their direct allocation from HUD.
And just for us who don't quite know the economic side of it, how is it affected by the general funds? Is there anything out of the general funds that we're dealing with, or just strictly is it straight from HUD that we're receiving the money directly from Congress?
There is no general fund impact. It's strictly the voucher program or the housing allocation covers all of it.
Thank you. Okay, this time to open up a public hearing for this issue. Anyone want to speak on the issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any other discussions? Entertaining motion to approve the resolution approving the budget?
Move to approve.
We adopt.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Most received, six yes votes.
Great. Let's see. At this time, there's no items for consideration. Any matters from the chair, commissioners, and directors? Okay. We'll adjourn. Our Tuesday, July 23 meeting will be canceled. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 27 at 6:30, right here. And we'll adjourn at this time.
I'd like somebody to make a phone call to Chris Baird and see if there's a problem. He's on vacation. That's nice to not to tell the mayor, huh? Absolutely not. Mrs. Baylor.
House Member Beard. Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Fawn.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Winn.
Here.
Mayor Broadwater.
Here. Okay, at this time, we'll have our invocation and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance with Dina leading us on that.
Okay, please prepare yourself according to your fate. Heavenly Father, we ask for guidance and direction as matters of importance are discussed this evening. May the decisions we make here be to the benefit of all the citizens of our community. Amen.
Please face our flag and say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no presentation, so let's go to oral communications. We will do the Garden Grove City Council and the Sanitary District and the Successor Agency all at the same time. Mr. Harold Rowley.
Mr. Mayor, my name's Harold Rowley. I live in Garden Grove, 12581 Omar Way. And I'd like to inform the council that in approximately 2010, there was a speed survey made to control the traffic in the city. And there's something called the 85th percentile. Now, what I did was I received a ticket citation about a month ago, and so I sent a letter to the chief of police requesting that the chief of police desist from laser enforcement on Stanford Avenue. And the reason I did that is because there was a change in the California Vehicle Code in 2009. And basically, what it said was that the city of Garden Grove and all the cities in Orange County would have to have a speed survey on any street in order to use a laser. Now, I've included a map with my copy of the letter that I sent to the chief asking him. Now, what this map shows, I've circled Stanford Street, and down here at the bottom, it shows the speeds that have been indicated that have to be followed according to the California Vehicle Code. Stanford Street is indicated as a major collector. Now, major collectors, according to the law, have to have a speed survey. I went to the traffic department, and I asked them for a copy of the map to show what their speed survey was. And apparently, for some reason, Stanford has fallen through the cracks, and there has never been an actual speed survey on Stanford. So anywhere on Stanford that a laser or radar is used, it would not be a valid ticket. So what I requested from the chief here at the bottom of the letter that I gave him, that a speed survey be done on Stanford Avenue so that if there are any citations issued on Stanford Avenue, that they would be legal citations. Now, I've also contacted the traffic department. They were unaware of the Stanford Avenue situation. Now, in 1996 to about 2002, I was on the Traffic Commission, and we had a lot of complaints of speeding. And there were quite a few in 2008, and I think there was one in 2013. All of the radar enforcement on Stanford, the signage, the radar units that have been put on that street have failed to slow down traffic. The officer that I spoke to after my court hearing, he stated that after he had given me a citation, he issued 11 more. Now, I came back about, I got on Stanford a lot, and about two days later, there were two officers working that street. And I should imagine, they probably got 15 or 20 more people. And I spoke to the officer again after the hearing, and he said he usually gets about 10 to 15 a day. Okay. Now, if laser enforcement, radars, signage don't slow people down, then it's obvious that something is causing people to speed up. And what it is, is the appearance of the street. It's a straight shot. It looks like you can go fast, so people do. Now, when I see a garbage truck, or I see a bicycle, a pedestrian, I slow way down, okay? Or a car's parking or something like that, and I notice that most people do that. But the sheer volume of the tickets indicates there's a problem. So that's why I'd like, in order to make any ticket legal, because I've seen that some cities have been forced to refund the money. And in this particular case, from 2010 to 2013, it could add up to significant money. And I don't want to see the city of Garden Grove have to put out that kind of money. So all I'm asking for is that the Traffic Commission be instructed by the council to conduct a speed survey, and that's all I want. Are there any questions? Would any one of you gentlemen be willing to do that, or lady?
Well, first of all, you can't ask us questions. This isn't a debate.
Well, I understand that.
You might say, I would really like one of you to do that.
I do, but I didn't hear you say that. Oh, no, no. I would like someone, any individual, or the whole council to instruct the traffic. Now, I'm going to go there tomorrow with an actual map, because they don't have that map, and it's very difficult to get that map. It took quite a bit to get it.
We'll look into this for you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Broadwater, City Council members and staff. My name is Rebecca Ruz. I'm a Garden Grove resident of 22 years at 12502 Janet Lane and a member of the Garden Grove Drug Free Coalition. I am here tonight to applaud and thank you and the City Council for developing a social host ordinance and unanimously approving it on its first reading two weeks ago. In my previous work as a health educator, I developed and conducted presentations reaching out to parents and youth about the harmful consequences of alcohol and drugs. My family and I have seen the effects that underage drinking parties have on the community, which is why we are proud to host a reality party for parents for the coalition. I believe the social host ordinance will be an effective tool that the police can use to prevent adults from hosting drinking parties for minors. I hope to see a decrease in the number of these parties in our city, a reduction in underage drinking, and safer communities. Again, thank you from all of us in the coalition. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Broadwa- Great, I broke it. Good evening, Mayor Broadwater, City Staff, Council. I'd like to first start off with a nice big thank you to Kingsley for seeing me this afternoon. We'll call him the great diffuser, as he really de-escalated my frustrations about the new city budget. And thank you, Kingsley, for taking the time to see me. I have been requesting visits with the council and mayor for some time now, and we haven't been able to get that done.
How's that doing?
Not too good, sir. Very unresponsive. Yeah, not too good. You're getting an F in that department. It's not the only one. But I will take a note to thank you for your time during the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association meeting for your kind words you shared with me. I didn't know you spoke such, I didn't know you knew French. I didn't know you spoke French. But tonight, we're gathered here to witness the City Council unanimously approve our city budget and to approve yet another consulting company to be paid no more than $25,000 for their assistance in looking over our property tax amounts. The council will be giving their ceremonial blessing to millions of dollars to a handful of developers. With the end of redevelopment, we now have the successor agencies' budgets to satisfy. We have millions of dollars going to the local Office Max, Garden Grove Hyundai, various condo communities, proposed mixed shopping centers, mixed-use shopping centers and residential, and of course, for our hotels. We'll be paying for most of these projects for years and years, possibly decades. I find it slightly amusing that we're still paying for the Hyatt at Chapman and Harbor. I used to work at that Hyatt. It was like my first job back in 1990. I was a busboy in the Atrium Cafe there, and we're still paying for that place. Wow. I wonder how long it's going to take to pay off the Water Park Hotel? I wonder if Mr. Broadwater will even be around when we finish satisfying that debt?
Shame on you.
You're all right, kiddo. I regret that I was not more vocal at the Planning Commission meetings about these projects when there was a ghost of a chance to prevent the city from digging itself deeper and deeper into a hole. The Planning Commission, which consists entirely out of people who were selected and appointed by our council members, just might have considered some of these projects too big of a gamble for us to invest in, but I doubt it. We continually witness the political fast track to a council seat and the handpicked personnel who seem to be completely on track with the council's vision for the city. And you know, sometimes I question myself, is it really worth it to religiously stand up here at each council meeting, questioning or challenging your decisions? I could be at home watching a so-called reality TV show or some sporting event. I could just pay my share of taxes, bury my head in the sand, and let my representatives handle my best interests. Well, unfortunately for the council, this is not going to happen. When you're allocating millions of dollars into projects that don't really benefit the majority of our city, visiting Annyong, Korea, I'm going to be here. When you pass the buck, redevelopment to the entire state of California, let the rest of the residents pay for it, for your projects, I'll be here. When you can't provide accountability, a transparent paper trail, or submit a detailed budget for the city, I'm going to be here. Now, I'll end my speech tonight with a big thank you on behalf of women's rights groups everywhere, specifically Senator Wendy Davis in Texas. Wendy, you're a hero. I know you can't hear me, but I hope you can keep up your stamina tonight, because the world needs more brave people like you and less government intrusion in our lives. Good night.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Peter Katz, and I want to speak on a couple of things tonight. First of all, I want to congratulate Councilman Christopher Pham for his award in Washington, DC, from the Walk of Courage Award that was received for courage, determination, and commitment in whatever endeavors he makes. And it was awarded by the Lutheran Immigration and Refugee Service Commission in Washington, DC. So congratulation. I'm sure you're quite honored with that. And I also ran into Chris on Sunday. If you remember Laura Winn that was here last week from the American Red Cross, a bunch of us was over at the American Red Cross Mobile donating blood on Sunday. And it was a delight to see all the residents from Garden Grove that were out there that were participating and donating blood. And for anyone that's interested in donating blood, just contact the American Red Cross. You can give blood every 56 days, so, and it doesn't hurt. I mean, you don't even feel a thing. And I was up and about, and for me, at my age, I mean, I was out and back in my yard in a little while, so. Now, I want to talk about, as a member of the Vietnam War Museum Board, I want to promote, and I just got some of these new flyers that are out here, but we are having a golf tournament at the Naval Golf Course in Seal Beach in October, on October 23. This is a way of expanding our reach to the military in the weapons stations at Los Alamos and Seal Beach and to get the word out there. So anybody's interested in participating in a golf tournament, this is in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce and the Community Foundation. So they produce golf tournaments at Willow Wick and other places, and they are very popular with golfers. So it's a way of raising money for the museum. Lastly, I want to talk about something that you might not be aware of in the Asian-American community. I'm talking about hepatitis B that's out there. You realize that less than 5% of the American population is affected by hepatitis B, but in the Asian community, that's closing in on 20%. One in 12 Asian-Americans has the hepatitis B virus today, and 25% of those will die. And family members camouflage it in sclerosis of the liver and liver cancer, but it's the hepatitis B virus that's causing this. And for Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, for some reason, the CDC does not know particularly why it affects them, basically 1 in 6, 1 in 5 in their population. There is a test that can be done. It costs about $50 if you have no insurance, and if you test positive for it, it's about $300 for a year's treatment that can cure this. Now, California children in the school system are required by middle school to be inoculated. However, a lot of children coming in that may already have the virus, the inoculation is not that effective. So, but it's the adult population that is carrying this disease, and because of myths in the Asian community, this cannot be spread among family members. Hepatitis B, you're usually born with it, or it's spread from dirty needles or unsafe sex, some of this. But if you're living in a family, if grandma has it, you're not going to get it. So people have been shunned from families because of this. And there's no reason for people to die. If you look in Los Angeles, 18,000 people have been vaccinated in the Asian community alone at the Asian Vaccination Center in Los Angeles since 2007. So we need to get word out to the community, and if somehow Garden Grove Hospital or Kaiser would want to set up some type of part of one of our health fairs or clinics, to get the word out to the Asian community that this is a stigma that need not be there, but a lot of people are going to die needlessly because of this disease. So we have to Asian-Americans on this council that can reach that word out there when you visit the television stations and the newspapers. Please, please have people tested for this. It's a simple test that could save somebody's life. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Good evening, council, staff, and Garden Grove residents. I'm Robin Marcario. I just have three small points I want to make. I just wanted to, there was a good article in the Register recently which addresses the Vector Control Agency. And this time of year, Vector Control is a program whereby you get rid of mosquitoes and rats, and it's free to the public. And because the weather's getting warmer, it's even more important to go in your backyard, see if there's standing pools of water. If your neighbor's pool is no longer working, it's green, just call Vector Control, and their number is 971-2421, and it's free. They'll go out there, and they'll take care of either treating where that standing water is, or whatever, or if there's any rat problems. It's a public health issue, and we want to control the West Nile, which is spread by mosquitoes. So just have a quick look in your backyards or anywhere that you're out and about. I know I went in my backyard and had a bit of a look, and I saw a sprinkler was leaking. Thankfully, there were no mosquitoes nearby, but I did remedy the leaking sprinkler. The other thing I wanted to mention was, unfortunately, there was an incident with regards to fireworks on the west end of Garden Grove. If you see someone using illegal fireworks, please call the police department. They're the ones that can handle the problems. They're there to keep the peace. They're there to enforce the law. It's a $1,000 fine for anyone that uses illegal fireworks, and our police department is serious about enforcing that $1,000 fine. So if you see or know anyone in your neighborhood that is using illegal fireworks, call the police department immediately. And the last point I wanted to make was, I cannot commend the city more, the 50th anniversary for Atlantis Park was spectacular. It was well-organized, well-attended. The park looks brand-new, even though it's 50 years old, half a century old. It looks brand-new. It looks spectacular. The Parks and Recs Department did a fabulous job organizing, sprucing up the place. Public Works did an amazing job getting everything work. And Tommy in our Public Works Department did the murals. They look amazing. The park is really spectacular. And to see many of you there at that event, Mayor and Jones and Pham were all there, was fabulous to see you there. And to see the kids sprouting, and the little water park that we have there, it was just amazing. And lastly, I wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to put together a little mosaic mural for the park, and it sits in between the two bathrooms, and it was a joy to create, and I just want to thank you for your leadership and for making our park new again so we can all enjoy it. Thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you, Robin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, and congratulations, Councilman Fawn, on your award. With recent scandals in the news, the folks in Washington have achieved a signal distinction. It may not rise to the level of a Nobel Prize, but they have unofficially reached the point where they are the most corrupt administration since Ulysses where they are the most corrupt administration since Ulysses Simpson Grant. Now, while I may be a bit naive to think so, I'd like to think that our city council is above such things. I know there's a lot of projects in the past that the council has approved that I may have questioned whether this was the right thing for the city, but overall, I think our council has done a magnificent job, and our city staff has also worked tirelessly to make sure that ours is one of the best cities, not only in the United States, but in the world. Now, on occasion, I've been critical of city council, but tonight, to misquote the bard, I come to praise Caesar, not to bury him.
Are we getting this recorded?
I want to commend the council on the host ordinance. I think it's a marvelous thing to protect our young people and hopefully keep a lot of them from driving under the influence. Not only does it ruin their lives, but the cost to others that they may injure or kill is incredible. So thank you again for that ordinance, and I hope it passes with all in support of it Now, I asked at previous meetings for information regarding the colors of buildings and things on Main Street, and I had a response from the Planning Department. I want to thank them for putting things together, particularly Erin Webb. She did a great job putting together all the paperwork for me so that now the members of the Main Street Commission and I can look at that and see if there's some way that we can put together a plan that will brighten up our Main Street and draw more attention to our historic downtown Garden Grove. Thank you.
You know, there's a paint company that's advertising on television right now about painting old towns part of the town, you know. Benjamin Moore is doing advertising there. You know, you might want to contact them and see what they will do for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I have no more cards, so at this time, we will close oral communications. There's no written communications. Council members, anybody want to respond to anything? Doesn't seem like it. Okay, we'll go to, we'll recess the city council and conduct successor agency business.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll call the June 25th meeting of the successor agency to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater.
Here.
Member Nguyen.
Here.
Member Phan.
Here.
Vice Chair Beard. Chair Jones.
Here. We already did oral communications in conjunction with city council and Sand District, so we'll go on to consent items.
You have two items, Mr. Chairman, and you're free to act on them simultaneously.
I'll move to two issues.
Second.
Call the vote. Three minutes.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, we will move on to public hearings, the proposed budget. Can we hear from staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and Kingsley O'Kuriki will present the successor agency budget for you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Chair and members, tonight, we have a proposed budget for the successor agency. The successor agency has the primary responsibility of implementing the oversight board, and State Department of Finance approves recognition, recognized obligation payments, and for short, we call it ROPS, Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, which is the schedule where we are on those obligations. And for the fiscal year 2013-14, we are estimating total recognized obligation receipts from the County Trust Fund in the amount of $22.19 million. And in terms of uses for that funds, $292,000, excuse me, $292,000 will apply towards operations and overhead. $12.6 million approximately will apply towards the rebate and other items outlined in your resolution report in the packet. And approximately $9.2 million will go towards debt service for the outstanding debts of the old redevelopment agency, for total uses that equates to the same amounts that we're collecting. So there's no balance at the end of the year. And I just want to point out that the total $22.198 million covers two ROPS periods. The ROPS are filed in six-month increments, so this will cover the entire fiscal year for 2013-14. And in addition to implementing the recognized obligations of the old agency, the city, of course, wishes to continue with economic development within the city in order to attract, or at least create opportunities for revenue growth within the city. Therefore, this budget includes a proposed allocation of $3 million to help seed money for the city to continue to pursue those economic development initiatives, which may include property acquisitions and other incidental costs associated with that. And the $3 million will come from the process of sale of the city-owned mobile home park a couple of years ago. So $3 million out of that, we are proposing to be allocated as seed money so that the Economic Development Unit will have a source from which they can begin to explore opportunities to enhance the city's economic situation. And with that, I can answer any questions you have.
Regarding the mobile home park, Kingsley, as far as is it the people who's living there now, how would they be moved out and stuff like that? Can you explain that part of it?
Yeah, actually, the park was, and still is, an ongoing operation. A private company bought it a couple of years ago, and so there's no plan to close the park. They will continue to operate it as an affordable housing project.
I see. Thanks, Matt.
Yeah.
Any other questions from staff?
We referred to it as Economic Development Unit. Have we changed the name of successor agency?
Well, no, we're not changing the name. It's the same staff doing both. The successor agency's primary responsibility, like I said, is to implement the ROPS, the recognized obligations of the former agency, but part of that staff, part of that staff time will be applied towards just general economic development outside of what was done before under the purview of the redevelopment agency.
Thank you very much.
Kingsley is your Economic Development Director slash Finance Director.
There's no other questions of staff. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Any comments?
He wants to be compensated.
Of course.
Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any member discussion? Or entertain a motion?
I'll second.
Call the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
We have no items for consideration, any matters from agency members? Okay, we're adjourned back to city council.
Okay, at this time, we go forward with the Garden Grove Sanitary District.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Member Broadwater.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
Member Nguyen.
Here.
Vice President Beard. President Phan.
Here.
We already conducted oral communications with the earlier in the agenda consent items, 2A, acceptance of the project number 7820, the Euclid Street-Lampson Avenue sewer improvement is complete. You have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Looked to approve.
Call for vote, please.
Motion received for yes votes.
All right, we'll go to public hearings at this time. 3A, the sewer services areas extending beyond the city limits. Staff?
Yes, and Mr. O'Kuriki is here to give a staff report on this item.
President and members of the sanitary district board, item 3A is an annual process that allows the city to collect sewer service charges through the property tax roll for the sewer customers that are outside of the city limits and do not receive water services from the city. These are sections of the district in county areas near Anaheim and Stanton. In order to place these sewer charges on the tax roll, the board must conduct a public hearing on the report identifying the fees to be collected and adopt the resolution approving the report. The attached resolution would approve the annual report detailing the service charges for the area noted herein and direct that the charges be collected on the tax roll. It is recommended that the sanitary district board of directors conduct the public hearing, adopt the attached resolution, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the fees on the tax bill. This concludes our report, and we are available for any questions you may have.
So just for my own edification, so the sewage programs that are, we're servicing the people right now, for some reason, the connection that they have from their homes is going to the Garden Grove sewage line, correct?
Through our lines that we service, but their water is provided by either City of Anaheim, Golden State Water, or a small district called Colonial Water.
So in the past, is this a new thing, or is this an extension of an existing assessment that we've had in the past?
This is what we've done through the years.
Okay.
Looked to approve.
Actually, at this time, I'd like to open the floor up to any public, for a public hearing. Anyone want to comment on the issue? All right, we'll close the public hearing at this time, and if you could please, if we have any receiving reports, Madam Secretary, if we heard protest or anything about this issue?
I'd like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM, June 25th, 2013, the city clerk's office received a total of no protests on this matter, and since 5:30, no protests have been received. There are 1,858 parcels in this assessment district. As a result, there is not a majority protest.
Okay, great. Any discussion members? All right.
Looked to approve.
Second.
Motion received for yes votes.
Great. I always keep a show in front of you there. I'm sorry, Kathy. Next, we go to 3B, which is the budget, and please, the staff presentation?
Yes, Mr. O'Kuriki will give a presentation on the proposed sanitary district budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Patel. District Board President, board members, with this item, staff is requesting that the sanitary district board review the proposed budget and approve the attached resolutions adopting the annual budget of the Garden Grove Sanitary District for fiscal year 2013-2014. A more detailed district's operational goals for next fiscal year are outlined in the memos in your packet. A few of them are highlighted in the slide here. The district staff is here, and if you have any questions, they can help answer relative to those objectives for the year. The district budget as proposed is a balanced budget, which includes both the sewer and the solid waste programs of the city. For the sewer fund, the proposed budget provides the necessary funding to continue deploying sewer capital, both capacity and structural adjustments or enhancements that were approved several years ago. And it also contemplates the staff will continue to do the fat and oil grease control education during the fiscal year. Now, for the solid waste program, the focus during the fiscal year will continue to be on the AB 939 waste diversion efforts that will enable the city to stay within the state required limits. Taking the sewer fund first, for the upcoming fiscal year, just want to point out that for the sewer, there is no rate increase. However, it's important to note that as the sewer rates are set based on water consumption, the lowest water consumption in the previous fiscal year, some people might see a lower sewer rate in their bills, and some people based on their water usage might see a little bit of an increase. But just to summarize the budget, you have a little bit more detail in your packet. We have a beginning balance a little over $1 million, and the projected revenue collections is $11.05 million. $3.867 million will go towards the operations and maintenance of the system. Contractual services will take up about $1.16 million, and we do have outstanding bonds, debt service on that is approximately $1.46 million. And we've allocated a total of close to $3.7 million towards projects for the fiscal year, and that's broken up by capital replacement and capital improvements as outlined on the slide. And we are projecting that with all of that, we'll have approximately $1.8 million in balance at the end of the fiscal year. Buck of that will be applied, will be moved over to next year, and possibly applied to continuing the capital improvement work. For the solid waste, it's, for the fiscal year, solid waste is a small increase. The adjustment is based on the relevant CPI, and that CPI increase is about 1.96%. And there's also additional 2.17% for landfill adjustment. That's just a pass-through charge that the provider passes through to the customers. The net change, of course, on the basic residential rate is approximately 2%. And essentially, per month, the current amount of about $20.46 per month will probably, on the average, go up to about $20.87 per month. And with that, in terms of revenue, we have a beginning balance of 91, and we're looking at collections about $3.25 million. And out of that, operations and maintenance will take up $1.2 million, and we are contributing approximately $300,000 towards the solid waste reserves. And there's, I think, $100,000 towards the contingency reserve, and another $200,000 we want to set aside towards the landfill reserves. And then contractual services, which is just a pass-through amount for those that come to the counter to pay, of about $1.7 million that will be passed through to the Garden Grove disposal. And we'll have approximately, at the end of the year, $70,000 in balance. And that concludes my report, and we can answer any questions you have.
Just, go ahead, Mayor.
How many households does the waste end of its service?
Mr. President, members of the board, the city of Garden Grove has roughly 34,000 services throughout the city, of which most of those are matching with a sewer connection also.
That's really inexpensive, believe it or not. I mean, when you take a look at the budget on the waste and compare it with the amount of homes, what's it come out, about $10? I don't know.
Just a question for me. I'm a little slow on the 3B2 section where it says about the appropriations limit. Could you, Kingsley, or someone, explain in layman's term exactly what's going on there?
Yeah, that's the next item.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll go.
Roger.
Say that.
Okay. All right, this time, I'd like to open the floor up for any public hearings that we may have. Anyone want to speak on the issue? Seeing none, we'll close. Any other discussion from members? Okay.
Move the issue.
Second.
Wait, actually, before we do that, I think we're going to take the next section, right? 3B?
We're taking one at a time, or if you want me to present 3B, I can also do 3B. We take them together.
Do you have a preference, Madam Clerk? Okay, we'll vote on the 3B1, and then we'll go to the next one.
Move the issue.
Second?
Second, yes.
Okay. All right.
Motion received for yes votes.
Great. Now, we'll go to 3B2.
All right, Mr. President, members of the board, 3B is the, 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 the California Constitution's and Constitution amended by Proposition 4, the GAN initiative, in short. It places an annual limit on the appropriation, appropriations of tax proceeds that can be made by all levels of government in the state, including the sanitary district. The annual spending limit is based on amount of appropriation set in fiscal year 1978-79, which is the best year. Subsequent year spending limits are calculated based by
Subsequent year spending limits are calculated based by adjusting the base year number by annual population growth and cost of living factors. These factors are provided by the State Department of Finance, and for the cost of living growth factor for fiscal year 2013-14, that is 5.12%. And that represents the change in California per capita personal income. The county population growth factor that they recommended that we use this year is 0.78%. That's applied to last year's number. Based on these factors, the calculated fiscal year 13-14 appropriation limit for the district is 11, is about $11 million in total. And the total appropriation that we have that is subject to this limit is only $2.4 million, which means essentially that the difference of $8 million is the gap from which additional appropriations can be made. If we have that much more revenue, within, you can approve additional appropriations for that. And that concludes my report, and we recommend that the board adopt the appropriation resolution setting the GAN limit for fiscal year 2013, and specifically for $11,588,988. That concludes my report.
Any questions? All right, we'll open the floor again up for any public hearings on this issue. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. All right, we'll move to entertain a vote, please.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion received, four yes votes.
All right, we have no items for consideration. Any matters from the board? All right, we'll adjourn the sanitary district at this time. The next time we'll meet is on Tuesday, July 9, at 6:30 here at the CMC. Madam Counsel.
Okay, at this time, we reconvene the City Council. I think we're at consent items.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do believe on item 4C that Mr. Jones, Councilman Jones, will recuse himself on this item, and Councilmember Fawn will recuse himself on 4G.
Correct.
So I don't know if you want to have Councilmember, or make a motion on the balance.
Is 4K staying on there?
Yes, 4K is staying.
Stayed on there, okay. I'll move the balance, then, unless anyone else.
I'll second the balance.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Okay, let's go to 4C.
I move to approve 4C.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes.
We'll go to 4G.
Wait for the switch.
I move to approve 4G.
Second.
Motion received, three yes votes.
Let's go to public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, your first public hearing is to consider a substantial amendment to the 2010-15 Consolidated Plan and 2013-14 Annual Action Plan regarding HUD funds and home funds, and Allison Mills is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. The item you have before you is substantial amendment number one to the 2010-2015 Consolidated Plan and the 2013-14 Action Plan for the Use of HUD Funds. HUD rules require that a substantial amendment be drafted for all program changes to the city's consolidated plan and annual action plan. This substantial amendment is proposed to allocate $2.5 million of existing home funds to the Garden Grove Housing Authority for the purpose of providing tenant-based rental assistance to qualified, very low and extremely low-income residents. These home funds will replace federal Section 8 funds that the Housing Authority is at risk of losing because of federal budget cuts. The Section 8 cuts were not anticipated at the time of the drafting of the 2013-14 Action Plan, which you repealed at the May 14 meeting, and only became apparent after the draft action plan was in the public review and comment period. Tenant-based rental assistance and Section 8 funding are interchangeable and will allow the Housing Authority to continue to assist their current role of qualified low-income renters. We are currently in the public review and comment period for the substantial amendment, which has been available for public review and comment since May 24, and continues until the conclusion of this public hearing tonight. On June 3, the Neighborhood Improvement and Conservation Commission held a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed amendment. The commission unanimously recommended transmittal of the substantial amendment to council. Tonight, you're asked to conduct a public hearing to hear and consider public comments and approve substantial amendment number one to the 2010-2015 Consolidated Plan and the 2013-14 Action Plan, and to direct staff to transmit the substantial amendment to HUD. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff?
Go ahead, Steve.
Quick question, Allison. With the financial impact, I noticed that we said that the funds that was going to be used for the TBRA program was going to be pulled out from the multifamily housing acquisition and rehabilitation. Is it from the same pot of money, or what are we talking about as far as how will the MHA be affected if we were to pull the money that was allocated for that program?
How, I'm sorry, how would the what be affected?
I noticed here that we said that the financial impact, that when we reallocate the home funds, will have no impact on the general fund, but the home funds that would be used to fund the TBRA program were originally budgeted for the multifamily housing acquisition and/or rehabilitation. So if we pulled the funding from one source to the other, how will the latter be affected, if any?
Right now, that fund that is set up to do what we call acquisition rehab of apartments primarily, there'll be that much money less. I think it's about maybe $200,000 to $300,000. We're anticipating a cut in, from the Section 8 housing. So there'll be a little bit less money. Right now, I think there's a surplus, or at least we've been accumulating monies, and there's no immediate need for that fund, so it makes a, it's a good time to transfer some of that into the Section 8 program.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not going to put the latter one in jeopardy.
Right.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. Allison, is Section 8 in jeopardy of being eliminated, or just reduced?
Just reduced.
And do you happen to know how many Section 8 rental units there are in the city at this time, or approximately?
There's 2,337 families with Section 8 vouchers.
Do you anticipate that the home funds somehow fill that gap if the, if the section is?
If HUD reduces the budget for Section 8 vouchers, if we do not backfill it with the home funding that we're contemplating tonight, then we would not be able to meet the rent roll, and current members that have vouchers would lose their housing. So this will prevent that from happening.
Any further questions? Hearing none at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this issue? Seeing none at this time, we will close the public hearing. Any discussion from the, from the members here? Entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
If a motion is second, call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Let's go to 5B.
Mr. Mayor, 5B is to hold a public hearing to consider the 2013-14 Assessment for the Main Street District 1, and Anna Neal is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. You have before you the final step in the process to establish the annual assessment for Main Street Assessment District Number One. On June 11, 2013, City Council set the public hearing date for today. The assessments remain the same from the previous year, and maintenance activities will also remain the same. In accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the remaining action for City Council is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming the assessments for the Main Street Assessment District. Staff recommends that the City Council open the public hearing and take public comment, adopt the attached resolution confirming the proceedings and assessments against the individual parcels, and direct the city clerk to file and record the assessments with a county auditor for collection of the assessments on the tax roll. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions from staff? Hearing none at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Mr. Mitchell, please.
The lighting on Main Street has recently been renovated. We've put in new bulbs, new transformers, and I wonder what the difference has been in the usage of the electricity for Main Street, if that has gone down, and if there's any surplus that might be applied to other areas on Main Street.
I don't think our electric bill is broken up that finite to know just exactly how many it's in a certain street. We get charged by the pole, if I recall, going through it with the Electric Edison Company a number of years back, and they do charge you by the amount of lights, and they give you a list of all the pole numbers, and if you want to go out with a magnifying glass and check out what the pole numbers are, you can probably break some of that down. You might want to talk to somebody at staff on that outside of the council and see, see if it can be figured out, but you.
I'm just wondering if there's any significant savings.
Well, if you got the, if you got the, if you got the pole numbers, and you could probably go back and add it up per pole, and then you go back and pull the bills from years ago, and check and see if there's any difference. So it's doable. I'm not sure I would want to do it, but it is doable.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Anybody else? Hearing none at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
Do we need to hear protests from city clerics?
Oh, yes, yes, let's get the protest.
At this time, I would like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM, June 25, 2013, the City Clerk's Office received no protest on the Main Street Assessment. Since 5:30 PM, no protests have been received. There are 30 parcels in the Assessment District, and as a result, there is not a majority protest.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move 5B1, 2, and 3.
I'll second that.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Let's go to 5B, no, 5C.
5C, Mr. Mayor, and that's also a public hearing to consider the 2013-14 Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District Advisory Report and Assessment. Mr. Blodgett is here to give a staff report on this item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, tonight we have a public hearing to adopt a resolution confirming the annual report of the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District, levying the assessment for fiscal year 2013-2014 for the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District, known as GG TID. So the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District is broken up into two sections, Tier 1, which are hotels that are north of Lamson Avenue, and these receive an assessment of 2.5%, which are most of all of our hotels that we built to date. And then, south of Lamson Avenue, will have a Tier 2, which is 0.5%, half a percent assessment. And these are the nine hotels that are represented within our GG TID district. So accomplishments for last year include a new lighting, LED palm lighting for the trees along the parkway of the resort, including these new tree rings that were installed. Cost for that was around $270,000, and that was just complete prior to the summer, and it looks great. For next year, we're looking at, the GG TID is looking at installing new monument signs that will go around the existing hotels at Harbor and Chapman, and this is an example of the style of sign they're looking at integrating. And there'll be two examples, one is horizontal, which is this one, the prior one was a vertical Also for next year, the GG TID is looking at installing bus shelters, very similar to the Anaheim Resort bus shelters, with our own Grove District logo incorporated on both the shelter and the benches on the shelter. As far as the fiscal impact, it's not anticipated that the city will incur any significant direct costs as a result of this action, and it's estimated that the GG TID will produce approximately $2.1 to $2.4 million for two tourist improvement efforts for fiscal year At this time, it is recommended that the City Council conduct a public hearing for the proposed annual levy of assessment and other matters provided in the annual report submitted by the GG TID Advisory Report, Advisor Board, and to receive the report from the city clerk regarding protests received, and assuming that there are no majority protests, adopt the attached resolution. That concludes my report.
Mr. Mayor, if I may also add that 80% of the funds received actually are forwarded to the Anaheim Orange County Visitors and Convention Bureau, which does most of the marketing for the resort area, as well as providing opportunity for our hotels to participate in the citywide conventions and a lot of the bookings that come to the area. So although we saw 2.2 million being generated, 80% of that goes to the Convention Bureau as part of marketing and of tourism and booking of major conventions.
Any questions for staff?
I noticed that the Tier 1, Tier 2, there's a difference in the percentage of the assessment. Is it because the Tier 2, they're not online yet, or is it an incentive to have them come online?
It's a little bit of both. Some of it is distance. As I mentioned, a bulk of the money goes for convention, marketing and promotion, and the further away from the convention center, the less benefit, so it's more of a benefit assessment. So the further away, the logic may be you would get less benefit from the convention bookings.
I see, thank you.
I have a question. What's the feedback from the hotels? Are they getting more through the tourist?
I think this is the start of the third year. I think their initial reaction would be yes, that it's been a positive experience for them to now engage and be part of the overall marketing of the resort. There's probably more data that needs to be accumulated to pinpoint exactly, you know, quantifying the benefits, but their initial reactions, this has been very positive for them to be part of the bureau marketing efforts.
Any other questions? Hearing none at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any discussion for the members?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
At this time, I'd like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM, June 25, 2013, the City Clerk's Office received no protest on the TID matter. Since 5:30 PM, no protests have been received. There are nine parcels in the GG TID, and as a result, there is not a majority protest.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move 5C1, 2, and 3.
I'll second the motion.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Why'd you break it up? Four, five, six, whatever, five, six, seven, oh, never mind. Let's go to 5D.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, 5D is the city budget for the upcoming fiscal year 2013-14, and Finance Director Kingsley O'Keeery will give the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and the citizens of Garden Grove. I do have a power presentation tonight on the budget, but before I get to that, let me quickly run through what you have in your packet. In the packet, you have the staff memo and budget resolutions, which outlines the proposed fiscal year 2013-14 capital and operations budget of the city, and the projected revenues and other funding sources to pay for them. The agenda items, 5D2 addresses the city-based budget, which includes all of the city's operating budget for basic general fund services, water, cable services, grant services, capital improvement, and special assessment funds. The rest of the items, from 5D3 to, I think, 5D7, are all related and enabling resolutions that you are being asked to approve tonight to effectively pass all of the budget for the fiscal year. This part of the PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to start with focuses on the city basic services, which is largely the general fund of the city, and it is the general purpose, which is the principal operations fund of the city. And with that, I am glad to say that we do have a proposed budget that is balanced. It is largely a status quo budget, not much change from the year before. from the year before. And it does provide the resources necessary to continue to provide quality essential services to our citizens. While financially speaking, it has not been easy since the recession of 2008, 2007-8. And just moving on, I have a picture here that I think kind of captures the current economic climate. The economy so far is like this tunnel, has been sort of stop and go, and appears not to be going anywhere in a hurry. It's been kind of sluggish, half-hearted, and very suspect economic recovery over the past couple of years. The good news is that it is recovering. The bad news is that it probably will be very slow for some time. And, you know, the fact that the economy has not been able to shake off clearly the impact of the recession from 2007, 2008. Now, just further, you know, within the context of this economic climate, we are preparing this budget. As I mentioned, the economy has been, you know, there's some positive signs there. Our revenues are recovering, but they have not recovered quite yet to the levels, the highest levels that we've seen in the past years. The recovery is kind of patchy, if you will. Unemployment is still high, it's coming down, but in historical terms, this is still a high unemployment number. Consumer confidence continues to sort of, you know, straddle in the low ranges. And for us, you know, consumer confidence is a leading indicator as to, particularly in terms of our sales tax revenue generation. When people buy more, especially big bulk items, we get more sales tax. In terms of other factors, like the state of California, for the coming fiscal year, the state has announced that they have a balanced budget. In fact, there is some surplus there at the state level. So that's sort of a relief, and we could breathe a little easier that we wouldn't have the state looking over our shoulder or trying to take away monies from local government. With respect to city specific issues, the economic development has been sort of delayed, or if you will, slowed down, you know, because of the economic climate in general, and also because of the redevelopment agency going away. But there has been sort of slow and steady progress. We've navigated very well, I might add, through the Department of Finance process in getting all of our recognized obligations of the former agency on the schedule and payments we're expecting to receive. So there's hope that, you know, within the next year or two, we will see some serious activity taking off as a result of that. The other issue is that our budget as it is, and I've said this over several years, you know, even if we don't do anything, even if we say it's a status quo budget, it does tend to grow on its own because of some inherent factors in there that adjust the budget for inflation and all. And we still have a structural deficit, it's coming down, and so the outlook is a little better than it was a few years back. Within that, the budget over the past three years, and we've continued since 2007 with three-year financial plans, and our strategy has remained the same. Overall, the theme has always been to be restrained, and especially now with the fragile and economy, I think we continue to restrain ourselves. And the strategy, of course, stands on three legs. One is that we are, we'll push to contain cost. We've cut a lot of the budget back in the last couple of years, but this year, as I said, it's a status quo budget, but the goal is to contain the cost and not let it to grow too much. And part of that strategy is also to tap rainy day funds to help balance the budget during this period. And we're not giving up, you know, even though the agency has gone away, we're still working through to implement the things that were previously approved under the redevelopment agency. But in addition to that, as I mentioned earlier, when we talked about the successor agency, we are setting aside some seed money, and we want to continue to be aggressive in pursuing redevelopment opportunities that would generate additional revenues for the city. With that, just a rundown, the current fiscal year 2012-13 will end in a few days, and, you know, it's been a good year, in summary. Like I said before, revenues are recovering quite nicely, and we will get to a revenue slide where we look into the details of the various revenues that we rely on to run our programs. On the expenditure side, we have stayed on target with the budget cuts and reductions. And the hiring freeze and expenditure lockdown is still in place for the current fiscal year. And the good news within the year is that because of the revenue recovery that we've seen, we are drawing down less from the special funds to balance the current year budget. And in fact, our estimate right now is that we will draw down $3 million less than we had originally planned when we adopted the current fiscal year budget. But with all of that, we will have approximately $290,000 that we can carry over to the next budget. And just getting into the numbers, just comparing what we adopted versus how we are projecting to end the year. If you look at the revenue, the first group of numbers there, revenues, we estimated total resources or revenues for the basic services at $80.9 million, and it came in approximately $84.3 million. At least, that's what we're projecting when all the booths are closed for this fiscal year. And if you just run down, that essentially means that the next number that I highlighted, excuse me, the budget cuts in savings. We estimated $2.7 million when we adopted the budget, but I think we're going to realize close to $3.9 million in reductions in budget savings. And that essentially means that the deficit that we were looking at when we adopted the budget of $9.9 million is now $5.3, which has helped tremendously by the recovering revenue and also the additional belt tightening, if you will, on the budget side, on the expenditure side. So in terms of balancing measures, if you look at the numbers there, we had estimated that, you know, we will use essentially about $10 million of one-time monies. If you discount the land sale, it's approximately $8.6 or $7 million that we were drawing down from various sources to help us bridge that gap. And that's consistent with the three-year financial plan that we've had, to tap these sources in order to sort of breach that period from the recession to when we start to see revenue growth again. But now, you look at the highlighted, next column there, we're not going to draw down the property tax reserve of half a million dollars, so that's put back into the fund. Pers Reserve, we're going to draw down the $3 million, we need that. The vehicle fund, the development agreement fee fund, insurance fund, where we indicated we would need a million dollars each from those. For the vehicle fund and development agreement fee fund, we're not going to draw down on those. So those funds are there in case we need them in the future. And from the insurance fund, we're only drawing down half a million dollars instead of $1 million that we had originally budgeted for. And land sales, $1.4 million worth of land sales, which is the gas station, and I think it's on Harbor and
Trask.
And Trask. That has not been sold, so we're not anticipating to sell that in a few days. So what we're doing is, you know, we have enough revenue to cover this fiscal year, so we're carrying over that land sale to next fiscal year. And you will see it highlighted when I show you the proposed budget for next fiscal year. So for the current fiscal year that's about to close, it's really good news. You know, we've made some recovery, but we're not quite there yet. As you can see, even though we drew down about $3 million less, we still had to use approximately $5.6 million in one-time monies to bridge the gap. So our revenue has recovered, but we need more to get to the point where we eliminate all of our structural deficit. And now, just to go through our revenue briefly, sales tax has come back quite nicely. Sales tax is the top line highlighted there. Before the recession hit, you know, we were close to, I didn't show 2006-7, we were almost $20 million. And we dipped at the, you know, the trough of that recession to almost $14 million, a huge loss. And that's when we started to really tighten our belts. But as you can see, the second to the last column going from your right is what we're projecting for the current fiscal year that's about to close. We think we'll realize about $19.1 million. And we're almost there where we were in 2007-8. For next year, yeah, we think with a little bit of improvement in the economy, we'll probably realize close to $20.1 million in sales tax revenue. The next one highlighted there, the general property tax. Property tax has been sort of steady. That has been the very thing that we can rely on. Garden Grove, you know, I've said in the past, it's a built-out city. There's not much new additions or swaths of land that has been redeveloped for housing and all of that stuff. So property tax has remained kind of stable. And we think we'll end the year a little better than we budgeted, $12.2 million versus $12 million that we budgeted. And next year, we think property tax will go up to $12.7 million. And paramedic tax, of course, it's, you know, approved that tonight, it's, you know, approximately $7 million in specific purpose property tax for the city. Vehicle tax is coming up nicely, but again, you know, we were at $14 million in 2007-8. We're closing in on that. You know, it's recovering, but we've not hit that level yet. And then the next column, the next row highlighted there is hotel tax. Hotel tax, we've done quite nicely. For the current fiscal year, we think we'll total close to $13.6 million. And next year, we'll get up there, close to almost $15 million. You know, maybe $14.8 we are projecting. And that's basically recovering the economy, plus, of course, the 1.5% additional TOT that was approved last year. On the flip side, you know, reimbursement agreements, which is money where we get from the old agency, that has gone away completely. We don't have agencies anymore to collect that overhead from. So that's gone. And interest, which at the height of it, we were getting close to $2.4 million. Right now, we're lucky if we receive $200,000 in interest revenue. Interest is so low, our investments, we cannot go more than five years, and we're getting 0.5%, 0.3% on our investment. So it's not adding much compared to what it had been.
Kingsley, do you think that the problem of getting loans is that the banks are waiting for the interest rates to go up, and they're just hanging on to what they have now?
Yeah, you know, I can't tell you for sure. I mean, there's a whole host of factors. That could be one of them. You know, interest rate is so low, and if you want to loan, you're going to be vetted today. There's no easy loan because rates are so low. You know, but, you know, in the recent day, in the past week, we've seen some, you know, increases in like five-year, 10-year rates. And I'm not sure what's driving that. We just appeared, and on the one hand, I'm excited that maybe we'll start earning a little bit more interest, but there's a flip side to it. Things may cost us a little bit more. So, but anyway, that's the revenue picture. I did mention the land sale. We budgeted, we estimated $1.4 million in the current fiscal year. We're not going to sell it. And we are of the opinion that we may have overestimated that property at $1.4. So we are reducing that to $1 million, and we're including that in the proposed 13-14 fiscal year as a million dollars revenue. We'll see how much we sell it for when we sell it. That's our revenue picture, and I just highlighted some of the key ones. It's a whole bunch of details there. And, you know, this outlines all the revenues that we collect to run the general purpose, specifically general fund activities of the city. And for the new budget, we are proposing that we continue the one Friday a month pay cut, the FALO, and that equates to about 4.65%. Again, you know, the goal is that we have not seen a complete recovery yet, and there's no reason to slow down in terms of, or in fact, go increasing the budget. So we are maintaining that FALO, and we will continue to hold the line on the number of funded positions in the city. I think we are approximately 622 positions today, as opposed to maybe 40 more a few years back. And we will continue to hold the line on contractual and other expenditures. And as far as we can manage, we're going to defer major expenditures until we see a better economic climate or picture out there. In terms of our numbers attached to balancing measures, the FALO, which is for all non-safety, that's approximately $1 million that we will continue to have in place. The other point that I wanted to mention, too, is that the budget will be, we're increasing approximately 2%, which is the negotiated for non-safety group that will take effect January 2014 for six months. So that's also included in the numbers. And we are proposing that we'll draw down approximately $4.6 million from one-time sources to help bridge the gap for the 2013-14 budget. And we'll have just a little balance right now. It's an estimate of approximately $50,000 after all is said and done for the new year. In terms of sources for the one-time funds that we are drawing down to help balance, we will take $2 million from the Pers Reserve to help balance the funds. Insurance fund, if you recall, last year, we slated $1 million withdrawal, but we ended up with only half a million dollars. So we moved that over, and we'll take approximately $650,000 from that fund. Workers' compensation that we didn't use last year, we're going to apply it, and vehicle replacement fund, $1 million, for a total of $4.6 million. This presents a summary of the proposed budget. You do have in your packet the resolution that goes line by line and outlines some of those by fund. And we do adopt a funds budget. The 291 is the balance that I talked about from the current fiscal year when we closed, that's what we're estimating. For the new year, we're revenues and other transfers will approximate $87.7 million. And our total base budget, it's $92.2 million, and we do have some additions. These are necessary additions, you know, the operating and supplemental appropriation-like mandates that we have to do. So that adds, you know, $47,279,000 to the budget. There's also additional $384,000 that is being, the lighting district is being supplemented to that amount from the general fund. And the City BG also housing impact of approximately $227,000 to continue all the programs in that department. And with the agency going away, and the COP that is outstanding, this is the debt service, $1.5 million debt service on that 2004 certificate of participation that is outstanding. The agency used to pay for it, and now, since it was disallowed, the general fund has to pick that up. So that total budget is now projected at $94.7 million. And there is the And there is the $1.046 million FALO cutback with the net expenditure budget for the fiscal year proposed at $93.67 million. And that still leaves us with the 5.9 structural deficit that we have to close. And there, you know, comes in the balancing measures. The drawdown of $2 million from the Pers Reserve, the drawdown from vehicle fund, a million dollars insurance fund, $650,000, workers' comp, a million dollars, and we apply the land sales of a million dollars when we do sell that land. And we looked at our fees, there's not much adjustment room in the fees, but we think we can adjust some things here and there and realize additional $25,000 in fees for next fiscal year. So that's, with that, we have $5.67 million that we can apply to close that gap. And that, you know, results in a balanced budget with just some change, $50,000 left. And that in a nutshell is the proposed budget that we are asking for you to adopt tonight. Just summary remarks again. It is a status quo budget. There's no increase in numbers in terms of our staff. There's no, the salary card for, as a result of the FALO will continue. It does incorporate the 2% adjustment for non-safety, which was negotiated previously. And the drawdown from the special fund is $4.65 million. It totals at $5.6 million if you add the $1 million from the land sale. And we do have that projected balance again. You know, I emphasize it's a status quo budget. There's not more change from the current fiscal year. We wanted to hold the line until we see some significant improvement in our revenue picture. Outlook for city revenues. Again, you know, I pointed out the economic recovery is very fragile. You know, there's no solid indication that we have a trend either way. And our revenues, most of our revenues are dependent on the economy. We've seen some recovery in sales tax. Property tax has been stable, and hotel tax is continuing to excite. But we're continuing to explore revenue growth opportunities. And in terms of our efforts with the State Department of Finance, we're excited about that, and we have positive expectations that, you know, things will work out the way we want it. And in addition to that, we're going to continue to be aggressive in pursuing city-backed initiatives to see if we can find revenue growth opportunities out there. A couple of issues that I wanted to bring to your attention. You know, I don't have much details about them today, but they might impact our future budget. Pers is one issue that has been there. You know, it's been discussed, you know, for a couple of years now. And Pers is doing some things with their calculations and how they amortize some obligations and also some of the assumptions underlying their actual studies. So we may see some of that impact. I don't know if it's next year or the following year. We don't have any solid numbers right now to incorporate in the budget, but just to be aware that some of those issues are out there. The second issue is affordable healthcare implementation. You know, that's coming. Actually, that's next year. The majority of our employees will not be impacted by this. But we do have some part-time employees that we have decision to make, and there might be impacts as a result of that going forward. But I believe as soon as we have more solid numbers and that will be shared with council, and I just wanted to point it out here that is a potential impact that we might have to revisit at the, maybe mid-year or maybe in the following year's budget. And with that, I can ask some questions.
Any questions for staff?
This is my first time through the budget, so I wanted to ask some clarifying questions. As far as the drawdown that we're making on our reserve, how much more can we draw down in the future before that goes to zero balance too?
Well, we have, as I highlighted here, let me, if I can go back to that slide. The true reserve that we have, which is a contingency reserve, we used up, I think in 2009, '10. We built it up to about $3 million. That was our contingency reserve, and we used it up. The Pers Reserve monies that we set aside perhaps 10 years ago, when Pers informed us that we were super-funded, and we continued to set aside those monies as though we were making Pers payments. And we've used some chunk of it over the past three, four years to help bridge this gap. And we're running out of that. With the $2 million for next fiscal year, there's not much left, maybe less than a million five left in there that we can use. The other drawdowns, like self-insurance fund, we are self-insured for insurance purposes. And we accumulate funds over the years in insurance fund. What we are doing here basically is taking, let me step back. We also pay these funds interest. When the goings were good in terms of the interest rates, the funds were earning interest. Now, basically, what we're doing is taking a million here or half a million there off the funds, instead of scraping all the interest that we've paid the funds. We do not want to jeopardize the integrity of the funds. And drawing down these monies do not jeopardize the integrity of the funds. For the workers' insurance fund, perhaps, maybe we have another million or two to draw down over the next couple of years without jeopardizing the integrity of that fund. The same thing will apply to workers' compensation fund. And the vehicle replacement fund, when we buy a vehicle, whether it's a police vehicle, fire truck, or any city vehicle, we amortize it. And as the years go by, we set aside money equivalent to that depreciation amount, not exactly, but equivalent to it goes back into a fund. So that when that vehicle is used up, we have enough money to go out and purchase a new one without having to burden the general fund for that. So we do have money accumulated in that fund that we use. What we've done in the recent years since the recession is if we needed to buy a fire truck, instead of writing a one-time check of, say, $600,000 to buy a fire truck, we go out and we finance it in a low-interest environment. That allows us some room here where we can draw down maybe a million dollars out of the fund without jeopardizing the integrity of the fund. And so those are not truly reserves. Those are internal service funds that we can go to when we are in a pinch to take money. But the goal, of course, is to get to the point where we don't draw down from these funds. They are there, and we're generating enough revenue to cover all of our general fund expenses.
Any other questions? Hearing now, at this time, we will open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this issue?
Mr. Mayor, I'm curious about page 30. I see two figures there that I don't quite understand how we ended up with $50,000 as...
You have to add the 291.
You have to add the 291, just the highlighted numbers.
Ah. 291 is a positive number.
Right.
It offsets the negative 5916.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Any other questions? You have to wait another year for this to come around again. Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussions for the members?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's a few other items that Kingsley needs to present before we take an action on all the others.
Okay.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, water supply. Yeah, just to quickly run through the water supply program. We do have a water supply program. And again, the, your packet, you have highlights of the objectives and the accomplishments of the water supply program, group. But for this purpose, it's a balanced budget. And in terms of highlights, again, you know, we have enough in terms of resources coming in for the group to continue to implement the water financial plan, the master plan, and to continue to execute all the capital improvement work that we approved several years ago. There's also emphasis in implementing the energy conservation program for water production. And they will, as they have in the past, quality staff, they will continue to comply with new mandates, whether it's water quality, permit, AQMD, et cetera. If we go to the numbers, the water fund is quite healthy, and the monies are available, as I said, to continue the capital work. We do have a beginning balance of approximately $7 million. Our total revenue coming in for next year is projected at $35.7 million. And the bulk of that, you know, goes into maintaining the system and also in purchasing water that we do not generate ourselves. And purchase what is estimated at $14.27 million. The debt service for the bonds that we have outstanding requires $2.67 million to service. And the rest of it, capital replacement, capital improvements, all of that will go towards the capital work that the group executes or plans to execute for next year. Total uses approximates $36.269 million. And at the end of the year, we're looking at a balance of a little, well, $6.6 million in the water supply program. And the next item, just running through this quickly, special assessments. And that includes all the special assessments, lighting district, park, main street, Gaddingrove, tourism improvement district, the park maintenance. You've already seen some of these and approved it. And basically, we summarize all of that, you know, in this chart here, just to highlight that we do have enough resources to cover all of the operations and maintenance and with a little bit of a balance left for the special assessment group of funds. And we also have the grant funds, which includes the City BG, the, all the special grants that we have. Again, you have seen those individually, but this is just a summary citywide for the grant funds. And we do have resources, enough resources to cover all the planned expenditures for the fiscal year with a little bit of balance left. And that concludes my report.
Did we open the public hearing too soon?
Yeah, we closed it. So we'll reopen it for these last remaining items.
Okay, it's open again. I was wrong. There's only about five minutes between that and the next year. Hearing seen now, we at this time close the public hearing. Any questions for staff, gentlemen? Any questions, period? Entertained a motion to approve 5. D2 through 5. D7.
So moved.
Got a motion? We got a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Okay, let's go to commission committee matters.
Mr. Mayor, you have a letter of resignation from Planning Commissioner Miriam Allred.
Miriam is leaving us to go, she got a complete funded law program, so she's going to be a lawyer in Utah, so. Anyway, we'll accept with regrets and entertain a motion to do that.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to present two names to you for appointments to the city planning commission. We have two seats vacant. George Bridgeman, who's been on the planning commission before, and I would like to appoint him. And then I would like to appoint Linda Zamora, who's been on a number of other commissions, not the planning, but this would be new for her for planning. Bridgeman lives out on the west side of town, and he's been involved in a number of different things. He's highly involved, was highly involved at one time with the Boy Scouts. He is the one that developed the race down the bridge.
Pushcart derby.
Yeah, pushcart derby. And it is exciting for those kids. Linda Zamora, Linda Zamora is an interesting young lady. She is an illegal alien. She was brought here, I mean, she, her parents moved here from Mexico. She was born an American, and then they moved back to Mexico, which made her an illegal alien in Mexico. She's a great young lady, educated herself well, and she will fit on the planning commission well. So I'd like to have those two approved.
I move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
7A.
Mr. Mayor, 7A is an ordinance establishing a paramedic tax override rate for fiscal year 2014, and Mr. Okariki is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, in June 1974, over 60% of the Gaddingrove voters approved the paramedic tax override to help fund the ongoing cost of emergency medical service, the paramedic services to the community. In order to maintain and continue to pay for the paramedic emergency medical care services, it is necessary to continue to generate revenue through the use of tax override on the taxable properties within the city of Gaddingrove. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt the attached ordinance authorizing a property tax override of 7 cents per $100 of full value specifically for the 2013, '14 fiscal year paramedic program. The total revenue anticipated as a result of this is $7.2 million, and all of it will be used to maintain and pay for our emergency medical services for our citizens in Gaddingrove. And this concludes my report. I can ask any questions you have.
I have a question. Basically, this is a renewal of what we've been doing.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So that's why our tax bill will not change?
No.
It's already been assessed like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Number eight.
Mr. Mayor, 8A is the ordinance for second reading. That would be ordinance number 2831, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Gaddingrove establishing social host liability for the consumption of alcohol by persons under 21 years of age at parties, gatherings, or events.
Entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote. Let's go to number nine, matters from the mayor and city council members. Let's start off with Deena, please.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to remind everyone, next week is, well, coming up is July 4th. It's a big holiday, and don't play unsafe fireworks, and don't buy illegal fireworks. And the fine will be $1,000 if you're caught with illegal fireworks. If you see anyone with it and there's a danger of safety, you can call the police department. I want to congratulate Chris for his award in Washington. I remember a few years ago, he helped a woman reunited with her son, wasn't it? It was an immigration case, and he did pro bono. And I know as a city council member, we don't get to do a lot of pro bono work, but being lawyers, you kind of get to go out there and do extra things with your law degree. And I want to commend Chris for doing that. And also, with the holiday coming up, remember to buy in Gaddingrove. I want to congratulate Linda Zamora and George Bridgeman. I've worked with both of them. I think they're two great people and welcome on board.
I'd like to say that pro bono was my favorite Latin words, and we're glad you use it.
Thank you, sir. I want to say thank you to Robyn Mercario for the wonderful mural that she had done there for Atlantis. Happy 50th. Also, Mr. Mayor, with the blood drive, I recall that Ms. Lawrenn has said that you had commented about not getting your pin for the five-quart donation. She want to make sure that you got your five-quart donation, sir. She wanted to make sure that you got your, uh, five-quart donation, sir.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. As well, so say thank you to, uh, our city attorney, Mr. Tom Nixon, for his amazing work in the, uh, social host ordinance. Um, you know, everything that you see on paper is basically Tom's, uh, handiwork. Um, and as an attorney, I can attest that it's definitely well done. So thank you, Tom. And then also I want to say thanks to, uh, our staff, uh, Ms., uh, Maria Stipes for helping with the trash issue. I had, was driving around town and noticed there was, uh, uh, sofas being left on the back lot of the 99 cent store on the corner of Westminster and Brookhurst, and that was dealt with. I just want to encourage our residents and our, our, our folks here in the city, if you see anything like that, please let us know because people who drive through our city, that's the impression they get of our city and we're to take pride in how we look. So make sure that we keep everything clean. So please let us know you see stuff like that. Um, lastly, I want to say thank you to Kingsley for the amazing work with the budget. I know it's not easy, but, uh, thanks for helping us understand the, the numbers there. And then lastly, happy 4th, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to, um, comment on my big, uh, buy-in Garden Grove experience this last week. Uh, I'm someone who's terrified of entering onto new car lots because I feel like you get hacked and vultured and, and, uh, high pressured, but nonetheless, my family ventured onto Toyota Place this last week. And although it was probably obvious when we pull up with a couple of kids that were in minivan stage, um, our, uh, sales rep who met us at the, uh, when we parked, uh, James Nguyen was cordial enough to take us around the lot and show us every kind of vehicle aside from minivans that we wanted to look at first before we finally gave in and figured out that that's just where we're at and that's what we're supposed to do. So we're enjoying our new, um, uh, Toyota minivan that we bought at Toyota Place this week. Wonderful experience.
Well, it has been an exciting weekend. Uh, Chris Baird and myself went to a Eagle Court of Honor where there were 10 eagles and three young ladies received their gold award for the Girl Scouts. And, uh, that, that place was rocking. I mean, it was really fun and enjoyed it, enjoyed it very much down at Saint, Saint Clisters. Uh, it, uh, we've had a lot of things going on well in the city and it's going, and it's run well. And I really like to tell staff, I really think you guys are doing a fabulous job. Everything seems to be going easy and good and that's a good thing. We did have one death in the family and I'm going to read about it. It is with much sadness that I adjourned tonight's council meeting in honor of a beloved city employee we, we recently lost, Doris Kaufman. Doris served the city of Garden Grove with tremendous pride and unwavering integrity for 37 years. In the summer of 1976, Doris came to Garden Grove City Hall for a dog license and saw an opening for a city, for a clerk typist. Six, six interviews later, she was hired. Well, that hasn't changed. Whenever Doris told people with this story, she would always end it with, "See, it isn't easy getting a job with the city." Doris soon became a word processor and operator and later in 1984, she was promoted to supervisor in charge of all city mail, print jobs, and graphics. She probably held this title for more than 20 years. She retired from her full-time responsibilities in 2006. Much of the city's, much to the city's delight, Doris decided to stay with the city, working part-time for the next seven years, leading special events and protocol. And boy, she's been involved in just about everything I can remember happening. As many can attest, meeting Doris for the first time was an encounter unlike any other. Well, that's true. The warmth of her smile and the energy she ex- executed left an immediate and lasting impression. Doris never met a stranger. What grabbed people the most literally was the friendliness of her hugs. Those were her signature. The city family shared in Doris' joy of becoming a grandmother three times, excuse me, as well as she shared her battles with cancer. Her steadfast determination to remain a supervisor was tested many times in her life. She may have lost this last struggle, but her spirit was and always will be triumphant. It was an honor for us to call her friend and a privilege to be part of her life. Doris leaves behind a legacy of loyalty and love and she will forever remain in our hearts. And she was one fine woman. And we will close that with the meeting with her, within her honor. And we say, anyway, we will adjourn till July 9th.